One Nation Under God, In This World. With Liberty and Justice for All. Roll call please.
Mr. Alt.
Here.
Mr. Beistel.
Here.
Mr. Calero.
Here.
Mrs. Love.
Here.
Mr. Miller. Mr. Polakowski.
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes. Mrs. Shipley. And Mr. Vance.
Here. Let the record show seven present. Citizens comments?
We have no comment cards this evening.
Thank you. Minutes?
Next week, June 11th, you'll be asked to approve the minutes of May 2015.
Any questions or discussion on those? Hearing none. Finance?
June 11th, you'll be asked to approve the finance reports for May 2015.
Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none. Reappoint PNC depository?
On June 11th, you will also be asked to reappoint PNC depository for all school district funds, state, federal, local sources for the 2015-2016 fiscal year.
Questions? Hearing none. Reappoint depositories?
June 11th, you'll be asked to reapprove depositories for school district investable funds, PNC, Scottsdale Bank and Trust, Pliggett, and Plisadraff, PSDAF.
Questions on that? Hearing none. Let the record show Mrs. Rhodes made it. Discussion, Charlie, spring update?
Okay, I just wanted to take a few minutes and thank you for allowing me to address you just to recap our spring sports season. We had a pretty successful year. Let's start off with our softball team. They ended up being 13 and 5 overall, 9 and 3 in this section. They actually was the section runners-up and they did go as far as 4th place in the WPIL, which is the farthest, I think, any of our softball teams have ever made it. They knocked off two of the top teams on the way, a Beaver team that last year won the WPIL and I think was even a PIA, they might even have been a finalist or won the PIA as well. They beat them in the first round very handily and the girls did a very nice job representing Southmoreland with pride and again, I think we're going to see a bright future on our softball team. The track team?
Good job.
The track team, the boys ended the season 6 and 2. The girls were 7 and 1 and they were section runners-up. They also had the distinction this year of being the AA county champions. You know, we all have a, during the year, we have a county meet where all the teams in our county participate and our girls won their classification AA, which I think is the first time we did that. A very nice trophy. The coaches and the girls did a great job. Michaela Rose was the county champion with the Discus. She had a throw of like 107 feet and so many inches, which won that event. She's only a sophomore, so again, a future there looks good. We had one boy, Brennan Hurley, break the school records in pole vault at 13'7 feet, or 13'7 inches jump, again, which is an outstanding jump. He's, he's got a senior year coming for us and I think he's even going to be one of these contenders next year as far as our state and WPILs. So, great job there. We had Veda and Kaylee Farino both qualify for the states in distance running. They represented Southmoreland again with great pride and did a great job up there. We had all these accomplishments with our girls that went to states, the track, girls' track team and Michaela Rose. If you notice, we had an article where we started on our wall up there, pictures and some action shots of kids that do some things like that. They will be placed on the wall. When you're up there, you can see it's really a nice addition and we honored them and Mr. Claire was there. We had a little ceremony with them and brought them up, took a picture. It's a nice way to recognize the girls for accomplishments. The tennis team, boys qualified for the playoffs again this year. They, this will be the fifth year in a row. They won the sections four years in a row. This year, they were putting a new, much tougher section. They came in second with a rebuilding year, still represented us well. They lost to, the first round to a team that was, I think, made it to the finals. It was a very strong Blackhawk team. So, boys did a great job. A young team, they should be competing again next year. And again, we're looking for a lot of younger boys coming up. I think that tennis program has been a very strong program over the last few years and I just look forward to keep growing. And then finally, with our baseball team, they missed the playoffs by one game. Again, that's the one team that we're working on. They were 9 and 11. We needed one more win to make the playoffs, but again, the most wins this baseball team has had in over the years here was 10 and we were just missed it by one game, but the boys really came together, had it moved up to AAA, which is another thing. The last couple of years, we played in the AA section. This year, we played AAA and they represented us and played very well. And again, we've got some kids coming back. Our middle school baseball team had some lumps this year just because of the way we played, a lot of quad A schools. We've got a good schedule going with those kids and hopefully, we can keep recruiting more of the younger boys and get them ready for high school level. But overall, I think our spring sports represented the school and the community very well and I'm pretty proud of all of them and I think we all should just, you know, thank them. They did a nice job. Anybody have any questions?
Nice improved results, Charlie, from our teams. That's really something.
Well, again, it's the kids and the coaches that are committing to it and working hard.
Lynn Huggins?
Lynn Huggins was again recognized as an affiliate professor of nutrition and dietetics at Seton Hill University. Copy of the letters enclosed. Please offer your congratulations to Lynn. Congratulations Lynn.
STEM grant?
All right, this is exciting. The Allegheny Intermediate Unit's Center for Creativity has announced it will distribute $530,000 in STEAM grants to 28 school districts in Allegheny, Beaver, Green, Lawrence, Mercer, Washington, Westmoreland counties. The Chevron Corporation, the Claude Worthington, Benedum, and the Grable Foundations provided up to $20,000 in grant funding to districts looking to enhance and create programs focused on science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics. Funding was awarded based on ideas, sustainability, implementation, relevance, and STEAM integration. We are proud to announce that Southmoreland was the recipient of a $20,000 grant. We received the following email notification. Congratulations, the Allegheny Intermediate Unit's Center for Creativity is pleased to inform you that your 2015-2016 STEAM proposal to support Learn As We Grow at Southmoreland High School has been selected for 90 submissions to be funded in the amount of $20,000. You'll be receiving an official letter of agreement that details the grant reporting requirements in the very near future. You should be truly proud of this recognition as the grant process was very competitive. A special thank you to Chevron, Benedum, and Grable Foundations for their vision and continued support, which allowed us to fund 28 grants. And we are going to have a brief presentation by the grant recipients and they are going to be Mr. John Pushkar, of the grant writers, Denise Pushkar, technology teacher at the high school, Elizabeth Goretzky, art teacher, Dan Kroccheck, the principal. These guys found out about the grant in pretty short notice. They got together, Mr. Chris Pollard also was a member of that and they got together and came up with some ideas, put a real nice grant proposal together and obviously, it was nice because they got it funded. And I'm going to invite the board down to the front table and we're going to see a brief presentation that is going to outline what the grant is hoping to do.
Thanks, perfect, perfect. Okay, let me first start by saying that, you know, these people deserve a big hand because they put a lot together in a short amount of time.
Before you give a big hand, I'd like to, Mr. Jason Zaleski, the science team leader, and Mr. Zach Cavalier, the science department at the high school, so I'll call Josh for that. Thank you.
So, we were given the opportunity and we're made aware of a grant opportunity by Allegheny Intermediate Unit 3, that they were doing these STEAM grants. Most people are familiar with the term STEM, science, technology, engineering, math. They've added the arts and dubbed it STEAM. So, when some of our administrators became aware of the opportunity, they passed it on to some teachers and the teachers got together, put their heads together and then I heard about it because my wife's technology teacher and I hear everything that has to do with technology. So, given the short timeline and the fact that we were wrapping up the end of this school year and everybody's busy and doesn't have time to run around and collaborate with everybody, I kind of tried to help facilitate it and I hope I didn't step on anybody's toes or get in the way of anybody. But we, since we're going on a Google applications for education initiative, I figured we might as well to make good advantage, take good advantage of that and we utilized the collaborative ability of doing that, created our narrative and shared that with the team members and we could all work on it from where we are, when we are, and when we have access to it. So, it seemed to work out pretty good. Again, let me say our team members, Mr. Zach Cavalier, Elizabeth Goodman, Chris Pollard, his wife Desiree Pollard, she helped out a lot, Mrs. Denise Pushkar, myself, and Mr. Jason Zaleski, our science teacher, one of our other science teachers.
So, our project proposal being a STEM, science, technology, engineering, math. Again, maybe somebody had some other, I just quickly threw an idea to you out there and our proposal is greenhouse. So, we're going to put the money towards purchasing a greenhouse and some of the accoutrements that go with it and because we called our project Learn As We Grow, we were thinking that rather than just like, okay, we're going to build a greenhouse and this is what we're going to do, we decided, well, we're going to get a greenhouse and then we're going to figure out how to do it. Okay? So, Learn As We Grow. We're going to start out with just the basic greenhouse concept of, you know, we're going to grow some plants in it, then we're going to use years that go by, take the opportunity to figure out, okay, how can we improve on it? How can we add automated systems to it? How can we use green technology and alternative energy sources? How can we possibly use other growing techniques such as agri-ponics or aquaponics, those kind of things? So, we're leaving it essentially as a blank slate for us to learn and grow. And I, you know, I'll leave that up to the science teachers and the other teachers to figure out what they really want to do with it. Does anybody want to offer anything? It's, I mean, it's just, we're going to try to figure out how to work that into our daily routine of using that as a teaching space, but I think it'll provide us with a lot of opportunity, not only for our technology teachers and our robotics and engineering classes. So, why a greenhouse? Because it provides us with a hands-on, multi-disciplinary classroom environment that will engage students through interaction with their environmental technology. I mean, what's more important right now in our environment and the problems that are associated with it and solving those problems through science, technology, engineering, arts, and math? This proposal outlines Southmoreland High School's plan to develop a reproducible model for teachers to introduce students to new concepts to allow them to apply their existing knowledge to solve multitude of problems in order to achieve a desired outcome. You know, if anybody's interested in the handout, rather than reading it off the screen, they're more than welcome to get a copy of our handout, but you know, we're looking at science classes, biology, chemistry, physics, those are obvious because it's a greenhouse. You're going to grow it through your science class. Technology education, well, there's a lot of environmental control that takes place in a greenhouse. You know, sensors, the sense of temperature, light, moisture, humidity, motors, actuators that open up vents, turn on fans, kick on the heat, turn on the drip irrigation, whatever. All of this can be automated through programmable robotics, programmable controllers such as Mindstorms NXT, monitors and probes to test soil conditions and what have you. Engineering classes will also look at developing like a zero book program. So, this is going to be maybe off the grid. We can collect water on a rooftop system. We can use wind, solar power, other alternative means of heating to the greenhouse. Let our kids come up with those ideas. The art students, the art students, ah, okay. Initially, you think, you know, we can go in there and have them draw flowers or maybe do some sculptures, whatever, but why not turn our greenhouse into something that produces something that we sell to the community and they can design the packaging, design the promotional material, help to put out signs, flyers, or ads that we place eye catching. Also, how can we make this greenhouse not like a developed assortment? Can we design the landscaping, the things that help blend in the environment? Math teachers can use, utilize, they can go in there and chart growth rate or ratios of mixtures or nutrients, flow rates of water. This area, calc area, certain area, certain things, there's a lot of mathematical opportunities for learning. And our technology classes can also, I must just get past the slide, but we're looking at getting the word out through social media, YouTube. We're going to video diary everything that we're doing, you know, post it on YouTube. Then you have a video log or blog, you know, we could call it, use Twitter, use Facebook, you know, whatever, to share what we're doing. And also, there will be programming opportunities, programming students to learn how to program the controllers and the things that maintain the environment within the greenhouse. Our short-term goals, create a media practical application for core curriculum instruction, introduce students to opportunities in new interest areas, provide students with an environment to foster cooperation. It's going to take more than one discipline. So, kids from all walks of life, kids from all areas, working together on a common goal. Long-term, design and implement a greenhouse, multiple disciplinary environment that can serve to provide Southmoreland students with an opportunity to consider solutions to global environment situations. And we all heard global warming, dealing with food shortages, using less energy to do things, make them start thinking about their world around them, grow flowering plants to be planted throughout the landscape within the district. We can beautify Southmoreland while we're doing this and attract other disciplines to join in the green house mission. I mean, why not maybe even take our physics classes out there? Hey, let's appreciate, maybe not within the greenhouse, but you can go out there and do things in a relaxing environment and better prove yourself at the same time. How can our students benefit? Obviously, through biology, the engineering, robotics, mathematics, informational science, green technology, recycling, alternative energy, art, design, aesthetics. Those are the types of educational disciplines that they'll be enriched in. How can we benefit? Our three seeds, collaborative teaching, complementary teaching, what I'm teaching helps reinforce what you're teaching and what you're doing. And again, we would like to thank Allegheny Intermediate Unit, Claude Worthington, Benedum Foundation, Grable Foundation, Chevron, and Michaela. Again, these people.
Just a curiosity question, it sounded like a great idea, but a curiosity question. Where are you planning on putting?
Uh, we mapped out an area, down at the old Tech Ed area, at the end of the Tech Ed section of the building. And we, we spent several days out there with the tape measure to figure out, you know what, there's just enough grass here and we've got a little parking area, so if we need to get deliveries and places to stage things, we can do that too. But like right off the end of the school.
Towards the front of the building?
If you're at the front of the building, the very left, even back in there where the wood shop and graphic arts entrances are, there's just enough grass, grass footprint. It's not going to be an extremely large greenhouse, but it gives us the opportunity to go larger or seek other funding opportunities.
Hey, and I do believe, Mr. Vance, that once we get further in the planning of that, that will be brought to the board to make sure that we approve of that we're moving ahead that way.
Just the $20,000 grant that will pay for the construction of the greenhouse?
Yes.
And the technology inside to be able to automate?
It's a little light in the dollar amount, okay? But we're already considering that and when we sat down, we went through several iterations of, okay, what do we want to do? And we want how much money towards greenhouse? It doesn't leave us a whole lot for anything else. And we even, like, you've got to even consider the site preparation. You know, you've got to level an area, you've got to put down gravel at the very least. We're going to have to run water, electricity. We're going to rely heavily on donations, volunteerism, and seeking other funding, other funding sources such as Kickstarter or GoFundMe. Again, those things are not guaranteed, but I think between these people and our creative abilities, I think we'll come up with some ideas. We've already talked to some teachers that have side businesses such as cutting grass and, hey, you know, you need places to dump your grass footings, we got it. You know, we'll start a compost pile. I've already talked to some other area organizations and they're looking to help us out. One of the businesses, it's not necessarily within the district, but it's very close to the district. I'm not sure if you're familiar with Karen's Agway 119, we're close to 982. They've offered their support. I have yet to narrow that down to what that is, but still, I, I think, once we have this project, make this project public, knowing people know what we're doing, I think they'll let some people step up too.
Seeing everyone present, next item is Source for Teachers.
Yeah, first, let me digress and apologize to Elizabeth Goodman, who I introduced using her maiden name because I am old and slow and I should have known better. She's been Elizabeth Goodman for many, many years, but she was once a student. Darn it, and I knew her name back then. Source for Teachers, Mr. Marnell and Dr. Molnar met with the representative of Source for Teachers last week. You may remember that we discussed using this firm for substitute teacher services at a previous meeting and determined that it was not cost-effective. Based upon a lower markup, rising retirement costs, and the requirements of the Affordable Care Act, it may be a good time to revisit this option. Mr. Marnell will discuss this with you in executive session. If you're interested in learning more, a representative from Source for Teachers is able to attend the June 11 meeting.
New business, guaranteed energy savings?
Yes, a representative of Johnson Controls spoke with you and provided a brief overview of a possible guaranteed energy savings project at the primary center, high school, and Ruffstale buildings last month. You will be asked to decide whether or not you want to proceed with this project. If you elect to proceed, the next step will be to develop a request for proposals to be distributed to approved ESCO vendors. This step is not a commitment to the project, but rather, will provide you with numbers and scope of work to help you decide if you would like to embark on such a project. And I'd like to thank Joe Price from Johnson Controls for being here. He's here strictly on, not to present, but just for informational purposes. If board members have questions, I believe there's a couple of members who are not at the previous presentation and if you want to discuss, he's here to help answer questions, facilitate that discussion.
Anyone with questions? Do you have folders for the ones that went in last week? Can I get those? Jason, did you get a folder from last week?
Yeah.
Yeah, what did you get? Did you get the presentation folder?
Yes.
Okay. No questions?
Maybe Joe can give us like a five-minute overview again to those who did not hear the previous discussion. What do you think, Joe? Give you something to do to justify your trip out here tonight?
Oh, that's fine. I make these trips all the time. It's not a big deal. What we talked about last month was looking at Southmoreland and the three buildings that were mentioned, Ruffstale, the primary center, and the high school, similar to the project that we did at the Central Westmoreland Career and Technology Center. That project is pretty much completed at this point in time. We would be, if you were to choose to move forward with a project such as this, we would be looking at energy savings, potential opportunities. We identified some of the potential opportunities with boiler replacements, potential boiler replacements at Ruffstale and Southmoreland Primary, building envelope improvements, which is basically sealing up the buildings, making them more efficient, control, look at potentially upgrading the HVAC controls to more modern technology, elimination of the old pneumatic controls, making it easier to control for Lee and his folks to control the temperatures, be more consistent from classroom to classroom. And looking at putting that into a, what is called a guaranteed energy savings project, which in Pennsylvania is enabled through Act 39. So, if you have any questions there, you can, and do a little research on Act 39, which is what allows school districts to do these types of projects and utilizing energy savings to fund either all or portions of the overall project. So, that's kind of a quick summary. Those savings would be guaranteed. So, once the scope of work is defined, the savings are calculated, whatever is determined the savings will be, it would be the responsibility of us or whoever you work with to guarantee those energy savings. So, if you don't actually recognize those savings, we would have to write you a check for any shortfalls.
Now, Joe and his company are, as a courtesy, having worked with our Central Westmoreland CTC and is getting us started in this discussion and this process. You know, they understand that if you want to proceed, you know, you have to let a request for qualifications. Under the law, you have to appoint an ESCO, an energy savings company, of which, you know, I know that Johnson Controls will certainly put in an RFQ on that, but you know, they're not guaranteed to be selected, so you know, thank you for, you know, helping us get started in this and for being a partner within our group here in the Central Westmoreland community.
And this is typical of what we do. We partner with the school districts and get them started, but then, once the, their RFQ or RFP, there's, you can go either way, what, once those are released and then we have to compete and earn your business just like anybody else would attempt to do.
When they review the different systems, and I assume we open that up so they can be reviewed, will each of those different companies be giving us specifics exactly the same on each system or is it just their overall plan that they'll be presenting? Am I clear here what I'm asking?
Well, if you choose to move forward with an RFQ, that is for qualifications. That's similar to selecting a professional services such as an architect or engineer.
Right.
Okay? So, you would select a partner based on their qualifications, their experience, the financial stability of the company, those types of items. And then, once they're selected, they go through a process that's called an investment grade audit. audit, and that investment-grade audit is the building of the project and identifying each potential measure, um, the, the payback, the savings associated, the payback, um, return on investment for that particular improvement, and pa- starting to package the whole project together at that point. That is kind of how the steps follow if you do an RFQ. An RFP, which would be a request for proposal, is usually a little more detailed, takes a more time, because now you, you should really write some type of a specification of what you want to see, and then each company would investigate and provide pricing for each item. Um, the law allows you to go either way. A lot of school districts do more of an RFQ process, um, because they want to do the collaborative building of the project, not just put it out there, uh, with, get three people to come in and look at it just from their point of view. So that, that's, you're seeing more and more of that, that the RFQ process is a little simpler, it's a shorter timeframe, uh, so that you can get started quicker. So that, that's, you're allowed to do it either way, that's the choice of the school district.
This project, there's grants and stuff out there, who's gonna research them? Do we have to do that, or does a company do that?
Well, Johnson Controls, if we are chosen as your partner, that's part of the services that we provide. I can't speak for...
Yeah, I understand that, but there, I mean, somebody's gonna research these grants.
Most of your, most of the companies that do what I do will do that for you, not all of them.
Okay.
Okay, but we do. Um, there are companies, and they're getting fewer and fewer, that will research those and help you apply for them, but then they want to share in the, the benefit of those.
They want to teach them thought.
We don't do that. Any, anything that we uncover, a hundred percent of the money's yours. Um, so that, that's part of our value-added services. So that, that's usually a criteria that people will use in their selection process. You know, how do you handle grants, rebates, and incentives?
Is that gonna be, like, in this project that we're talking about, voting on the end next week?
Next week?
We're gonna go through with this?
Next week, all you're voting on would be, in my understanding of it, is releasing a, a RFQ or an RFP. So basically, that's an advertisement in the paper for qualified ESCO companies to submit a proposal. And if it's a request for qualifications, it's all qualifications-based on the company, you know, what they do, who their references are, where they've done projects. There's a lot of information as far as, you know, providing financials, because you want to make sure you're working with a company that's financially stable, somebody that's been doing this for a long time. Uh, there's, there's a lot of, uh, questions around, um, you know, listing how many projects you've done, uh, you know, are you in any type of litigation, whether it be OSHA, or, you know, any of your former customers suing you, or anything, there's a lot of information in there so that you can really delve into, you know, who's the best partner for you to work with.
Does the ESCO, whoever the ESCO may be, is there a special process they have to go through to, to be recognized in the state of Pennsylvania as a, an ESCO company?
There is a national accrediting organization. Uh, the initials are N-A-E-S-C-O, Niesco. Their website's niesco.org, and there's two levels of, you can be a member of Niesco if you're an ESCO company. Basically, all you do is you pay a fee and you're a member. And then there's accredited ESCOs, and there's multiple, um, levels of accreditation that you can achieve, and that is a much more detailed process, that costs money, takes a lot of time, and the, the Niesco organization actually, um, looks into your projects, looks into your savings results, verifies information, they'll go and actually look at previous jobs that you've done, and that's why it's a more involved process. There are quite a few companies that are, um, Niesco accredited. Uh, there used to be a, an approved group of, um, ESCO companies in Pennsylvania under the DGS a few years ago, but that program was, it was called the GISA program, and that program was disbanded probably two years ago, maybe three. Um, so there's not an official approved, um, ESCO company list in Pennsylvania anymore. When there was, we were one of those, uh, approved ESCOs, um, and they're trying to revamp that program, but it's not revamped yet. Recently, there was a, a fairly large project for the state police headquarters in Harrisburg that went out, and that was kind of part of the revamping of that process, and we were selected to do that project, and that project's in development right now. So we're going through that investment-grade audit phase and building the project and getting pricing on all the facility improvement measures and everything, so. Sir?
We go with the resolution next week of doing the two options you said. I know last week, or last meeting, you went over the timeline of how things go, but when is the point of no return where we're in the project for sure, and where is that point of where we can still back out and not have lost significant money or whatever?
The, to issue an RFQ costs you nothing, other than whatever it costs to advertise in the paper. It'll cost a little bit of your time to evaluate the proposals and select an ESCO company. The investment-grade audit is usually kicked off with some type of, we call it a project development agree- agreement, other companies call it something differently. That'll outline the scope of what they're gonna develop, and what they're gonna build from a project standpoint. You're still not on the hook quite yet, but once you start into that process, at the end of that investment-grade audit, the end result is a contract, okay? If you choose not to move forward with the project, the, whoever the ESCO company is will typically ask for reimbursement for their engineering fees for that investment-grade audit. Those fees are usually, and, and you want them to be outlined ahead of time before the investment-grade audit starts. Typically, once customers start into that investment-grade audit, it's probably ninety-five, ninety-eight percent of those customers end up doing a project of some sort. Every once in a while, somebody will back out, um, and they're for varying reasons. You know, you could, elections can change the makeup of a board and, and people might not support the project. You know, the new incoming board members may not support the project. So that does happen occasionally, but it's very rare that a project doesn't move forward.
Joe, I know you can't speak for all of them, you'll just speak for your company. If you were to do that, what would the engineering costs be for your company approximately if we would decide not to go through with the project?
They vary, we, we, what we usually try to do is outline them ahead of time. Basically, we look at the overall square footage of the spaces that we're gonna investigate, um, the other things that play into it is, you know, in your case, they're all fairly closely located. Some districts, they're really spread out, so there's a lot of time. Costs of bringing in engineers, where you bring them in from, you know? We're local here, right? Everybody that we would be, have on this project's all Pittsburgh-based, so there, we wouldn't have any overnight fees or anything like that. It's hard to say from a percentage, I know from our standpoint, we, we've been running on most of our projects less than pre- three percent of what the total project ends up being, more likely two percent, but that's not every project, so. Yeah, we have a bunch of different metrics to try to put a number to it, you can always put a, you know, so many cents per square foot is another way to put a ballpark number in there.
You're selected, you would give us, you'd be able to give us a ballpark figure before?
Yes, we would commit to a number ahead of time, before moving forward, yes.
Any other question?
And that, that is negotiable too.
Okay.
So it's not a, it's, we, we usually work with the district, districts on that. We come up with a, you know, the, what we think is gonna be involved, we put a price to it, and that is negotiable, so it's not a, we don't just hand it to you. Any other questions?
Anybody else? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time to see me.
Thank you, Joe, good, good questions, good information, appreciate it.
High school gymnasium floor?
Bids for the Southmoreland High School gymnasium floor were opened yesterday. Uh, you will be asked next week to consider bids and vote on awarding of a bid. Uh, we have additional information for you, Mark Scheller from Echols has come out, uh, Charlie Lee, David, we're all involved in that. Thanks, Mark, for being here.
Oh, my pleasure. Uh, yeah, we received the bids for the high school flooring, um, yesterday, so I wanted to give you an update on that. I have some product literature just to give you an understanding of what the products were bid, so I'm gonna turn those, hand those out before I get started.
They're sort of more of a...
Okay.
Hi, Mark. Can you hear you?
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, um, so the way that the, we packaged the bids, um, uh, we started with a conversation, as Tim had mentioned, uh, with Lee, uh, Charlie, uh, and, and Jack at the, the site, and Lee, Mizwa, did a great job of sort of getting some of the providers, the, the contractors that would install the products in place, and had preliminary conversations with them. So when we met, Lee had already done his homework and, and had some recommended products, and that's what we have before you. So after that conversation, then, we packaged up the documents so that we could get competitive prices between the contractors, and the, it's very similar, if you remember how we did the turf project, we had multiple products provided by multiple people, and that's exactly the same way that the flooring is. So we had three, um, installers that could provide three separate, um, products, and that's, that's the literature that you have, uh, before you. And so we, we basically packaged the bids as base bids, so you have base bid one, two, three, and four. And base bid one is a, um, was designed so that the Tom Brown Flooring Company could provide a Connor product. Base bid two was so that Sports Floors could provide an Action product. Base bid three was so that S&amp;S Flooring could provide a Bio Cushions product, and base bid four was for any of those bidders to put a write-in product, so something that we didn't necessarily specify specifically, if they had another product they wanted you to look at, uh, they could do that, and we do have one of those. Um, we got two bids from two of the contractors, and base bid three, there was no interest in that, uh, they probably got busy for the summer and, you know, felt that they really couldn't fulfill that your project's needs, so they didn't put a bid in. Um, so, going to the, the products, uh, the, the Resol Lock is the first bid, it's the base bid number one, and that is in the, uh, in the total of a hundred and twenty-four thousand eight hundred dollars. All of these, these first two numbers that, that I'll show you are a floating system. So basically, the floor system comprises of a pad over top of your existing floor, it's about a quarter inch thick, it's a closed cell foam, that's your cushion layer, then you have two layers of plywood of a half inch, and then your finished maple boards of three-quarter inch. So the, this product basically is that cross-section. So in order to, to do that, we're putting new flooring on top of your existing, we'll also need to add ramps at the doorway so that you meet a, uh, the code compliance, accessibility, uh, things of that nature. Need to raise the bleachers up as well, raise the backstops up as well to accommodate the raised floor. So that Resol Lock is a product that is your base bid number one. And if you open up the document, you can sort of see a cross-section. The one thing that I wanted to note on this cross-section inside of here, these, um, the, the, the pieces that are called the nominal one-by-six softwood, that's not what they will install, they're going to install the plywood, the con- the consistent, the very uniform plywood, and that makes them exactly equal to your base bid number two. So you're looking at almost the exact same product installed by two different people for two different numbers. So let's go on to your base bid number two, which is a hundred and thirty-nine, yes, go ahead. Correct. Correct, it will be in the contract, and we will not approve the submittals that come into, you know, to, into Echols to, uh, review and approve before they order the product. If we see anything other than the plywood, we're not going to approve it. And that's really good, that's something very important, because one thing we need to be concerned about in, in your gymnasium is the expansion and contraction of the wood floors, because the, the wood floor is gonna be set off about an inch and a half from your perimeter walls, but the compounding or the complexity of your system is the fact that you have the bleachers sitting on top, those dividing bleachers, that's gonna cause a pinpoint of your wood floor, so that's gonna prohibit the expansion and the contraction at that point, which could cause sort of a bubble or a cupping of the floor. So when they, they came here and they met with Lee, that's why they're recommending these systems, and that's why we specified around them, because it's a very good, very minimal expansion contraction, it's a very solid floor, because you have that extra condition. So we'll make sure that, uh, what they submit will comply. So that's your Resol Lock. Your second, um, bid came from, um, uh, Sports Floor Incorporated, and that is your Action Flex system, this is the literature here, your action system, very similar, it's just for your information, but that came in at a hundred and thirty-nine thousand six hundred and forty-three. So, um, those two are exactly equal floor types, floor systems. Then, like I said, we gave an alternate, uh, a base bid four so they could write in a bid, and that is also Tom Brown Flooring, they put a base bid number four, and that is their Focus system, and you'll have that literature here. This is different because it's not a floating system, this, if you look at the cross-section on the second page, you'll see that it's an, actually, an anchored system. They felt that, uh, this was a, a value, they thought that they could give you a nice floor, um, but in our conversations with them, they stand behind, they're lower, you know, the original base bid number one, this was just an option to give you an anchored system. It has a little bit more flex, it has a little bit more certification, uh, that we, that we spoke to them about a DIN-certified floor, so there's certain quality standards and testing so that colleges and universities go through. This is one of those higher-level floors that are very appropriate for that high level of play, uh, for colleges. I think it's overkill, uh, for, for you, I, I really do, I think that, you know, i- it's not necessarily worth another forty thousand dollars, uh, to get that system, um, and, and when they, they initially talked with Lee, um, that was, um, that was a system that they offered, but they changed once they found out that they were being bidding, you know, bidding equal to everybody else, they really wanted to tighten up and go with an apples-to-apples scenario. So that really, I think really what we want to talk about tonight are the, the first two numbers. I feel very good, uh, with the low bid number.
Mark, by the way, what was the price on that?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, you don't have this in front of you, I apologize, it's a hundred and forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars.
Thank you.
Okay. So you have your low bid, a hundred and tw- twenty-four thousand eight hundred dollars, a hundred and thirty-nine thousand six hundred and forty-three, it's your second level up, and then your third option is one forty-nine, five hundred thousand. So had some conversations with everybody today, um, I, I made sure that the, the low bid, um, Tom Brown was going to stand behind that product for the installation, for the, the criteria that is, uh, you know, in your space, uh, and they do that. Uh, so after the conversations today, I feel comfortable recommending that system. So that is what we'd ask you on, uh, next week, to vote to, um, to approve that. It is, as you know, summer months, you know, really, really, a, a lot of work has to get done, uh, and then also, once they get in and start to remove and move the, the bleachers, they need to have the, the wood manufactured, it's not just on the shelf, it needs to be fabricated and cut to length and everything, so there's a long lead time, so, uh, we want to get it rolling as soon as possible. So if you, you vote next week, and, and, and if it is, uh, you know, your decision to move forward, um, I will let them know on Friday and get them rolling. Any other questions?
Mark, does this contractor vote to move the bleachers and then reinstall?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
Is this system installed about the location of the place?
Very good question, it is. Lee actually went and saw this, it's installed at Boyce Campus, at the Boyce Campus. This was the, one of the, uh, you know, favorite, uh, looking, uh, products, and, um, one of the things that we did is, uh, when, when Lee looked at that, he was very, very taken by how tight the boards looked, you couldn't see the spaces, so the expansion and contraction wasn't really evident. So we created something in the spec called a crush bead, that is just a little fin of wood that allows that expansion contraction to happen while closing those boards. So it was a system that, uh, you know, looked quite good, we feel that it's going to, uh, be a, a great product, a great improvement, uh, for the gym.
The dividers, is that, are they gonna take them out? The divider system? The dividers, is that, are they gonna take them out? The divider system, it's in the middle of the floor now. Are they gonna remove them, and are they gonna use tarps? Or is that all in this bid?
Yeah, everything is in the bid. So what they'll do is they'll remove all the bleachers and move them to, you know, either offsite or somewhere else in the gym so that they can start working. Once they get the floor down and refinished, they will put the bleachers back on. They, they know the magic about moving things around, so that's gonna be sort of there.
I'm talking about the divider in the middle, to divide one part of the gym and the other part, so they have a divider in the middle. It comes out with a motor. Is that gone?
That is going to be gone. Part of this contract is they'll take it away. But we talked about doing that through a state contract, purchasing that and putting that back in separate from this, this job of the flooring. So it, it can go back in, but when the flooring is done, it will not be replaced. And the reason that we needed to do that was just to get it done in enough a time for the summer. That was such a long lead item, and we felt you could save some money by doing that state contract. It's gonna be under your amount that you need to bid the jobs anyway. So we felt comfortable making that recommendation and removing it. So, yeah, when it, when the flooring's done, maybe the next step is then to procure something to have that installed.
Any more questions?
So the whole, the whole outdoor will be done, everything, the practice area and the gymnasium will all be done. Now, what about the doorways and out into the hallways and so forth? How are, how is that going to be?
That's right. That's a good question. They are going to, so because the floor is up about two inches, two and a half inches, so we need to do a ramp that, it's sort of just a, it's probably only gonna be thirty inches long. And we're going to finish that with rubber. So it's going to be a non-slip surface. It will be built with plywood, plywood substrate, wood blocking, solid underneath, and then the rubber will go on. We own transition strips where that rubber meets the wood floor. One of the things in order to ease, make that detail a little bit better, the width of the wall. So the wood floor, I wanted to minimize cuts on the wood floor. So where the door recess is in back to your doors, that's gonna be a rubber transition. So the pad of the door, or the sill of the door will be rubber, because that reduces costs on the overall wood flooring. So, yeah, that'll be a wood floor. So all into your storage room, into your corridors, everywhere. Every opening will have that ramp. We don't need to have handrails or anything like that. And I think if you've been to events to other schools, it's a similar condition that you see, you almost just don't even notice it. It's safe enough, you can transition it up. But I think, I, I probably will go with black, but we'll pick a color, you know, with the district, and, and make sure that the, the colors are something that everyone likes.
Is that similar to what was, what was, what you saw at the Boyce Campus? Was that similar?
I wasn't at the Boyce Campus. Do you recall whether it was raised up with ramps?
Were they in?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, yeah, very similar. Laura Highlands has that as well, I think, into their gym. When you have like initial gym floor, a lot of times you didn't recess the floor slab, so you're putting wood on now in the, in the modern age, and then that's how we deal with it. Another thing that we're going to do is we're going to get the district's red color on the flooring, so it's going to, to, you know, certainly match your logo and the colors. We added a logo in the center. So just very minor graphic changes, but it'll, you know, freshen that up. And then possibly, a painting project in, in, in the gym might be needed to upgrade the colors to, to coordinate better, but that's down the road.
Ms. Cora?
The guarantees on the floor, it's a two-year warranty on the floor installation, and that's very standard. Actually, one year is a standard warranty for these gym floors, and that's installation, that's material, that's padding. But the actual cushioning is a twenty-year cushion, so the safety factor is longer. But the workmanship and all of that, I think what it is, is they have to, to weigh the option of how long they're going to warrant it. Because of the way that the abuse that those spaces get, humidity, people aren't running air conditioning, things of that nature. So they, they needed to get out, you know, do as much as they could. But then really, once it's inside, you know, being used by the owners, I think that that two years was probably the max. But it's gonna be safe for, I think it's a twenty, twenty-five year safety. So it will, the ball control, the ball, you know, cushioning and bounce will be a twenty-year expectancy. And another thing, you can get three sandings off of a wood floor. The, the three-quarter inch wood can be sanded down, you know, an eighth of an inch each time, and still keep the integrity of the floor. So this, this is a very long-life product that, you know, you're getting for a really a good value for a hundred and twenty-four thousand. You'll have a wood floor that you can take care of for many years to come.
Any more questions?
Yeah, Mark, I've seen wood floors, you know, get that sand treatment. Typically, how, how often is it, would that occur on a gymnasium floor?
They might be ten years.
Every ten years?
Yeah, I think ten years is generally what you do. So you get, you know, three, and, and some people push it and might even do four. They might push it and do longer. So you might get thirty years within your sanding. But it's really just, as it's starting to wear and, and you don't, sort of, it's not as attractive, and it's really just attractiveness. It's, it's not necessarily the, and then the wax it's on, it might start to yellow, so.
You're getting closer to the first, because you've got the original eight, then you've got one sanding, two sanding, and three sanding. So you've got.
Right. Exactly, yeah. Yeah, so they're, these are floors that last quite a, quite a long time, so.
Anyone else? Mr. Bison?
If the, this gets voted in, or will this be done by, over summer?
Yes. Yes. They bid knowing that it had to be done by August seventeenth. And the way that we formatted their bid forms, their acknowledgement, their invitation, was that there are liquidated damages. So if they are not done by the fourteen, by the seventeenth, the district has the right to, you know, get liquidated damages because you can't use the space. I will say that I, I think as that time comes, I may be before you, you know, our construction department might be before you to tell you, there could be some outstanding factors that caused a little bit of a delay. And, and we might ask you to be a little lenient on that. But what we wanted to do is make sure that that language was in their contract so that they knew we weren't messing around, and it couldn't extend deep into September, you know, or even deep into August. But I think we do have to somewhat keep an open mind as far as the tight schedule. You know, it would be great, I mean, even if it's one week, you know, if we could vote tonight, they would buy them another week. But they knew the schedule. It was in the document, so they bid accordingly.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Mark.
Good. All right, thank you, everyone.
Yeah, Mark, you always provide us with such good information, and thanks for getting on this so quickly.
My pleasure. I'm glad I can help, and anytime you need anything, please call.
Custodial maintenance supplies?
You will be asked to award bids for custodial and maintenance supplies at the June 11 meeting. Anything that needs to be discussed, Mr. Marnell can do that tonight.
I think you'll want to add to that wording athletic supplies also.
Okay.
Custodial, maintenance, athletic supplies.
Thank you.
Any questions? Hearing none. Tri-state study council?
You'll be asked to approve membership in the tri-state study council for the 2015-2016 school year at a cost of seven hundred dollars.
Questions? Hearing none. Citizens' comments? We have none. Seeing none. Need a motion to adjourn for executive session for personnel? No. For personnel? Motion, Mrs. Rhodes, second. Second, Mr. Calero. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes eight to zero. I'm gonna do David first. I'm gonna do David.